Welcome to the July 13, 2023 Planning Board Public Hearing. We'll go through a roll call.
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity.
Present.
The Secretary is present. Board Member Catalinato.
Present.
Board Member Mutu is absent. Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Please join in for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, the first application is CVS. Would you want to come up? And we don't need to read into the record the notice because it's a continuation.
Philip Butler with the law firm of Farrell Fritz on behalf of the applicant. I know a request for adjournment was filed with the board. The reason being that the applicant and the property owner are working out some of the terms and conditions of a private lease that's still being negotiated, and they don't want to proceed until that is squared away. So, notwithstanding that, I apologize to this individual for coming tonight, but unfortunately, that's the reason for the adjournment, so.
Good, so we'll take some testimony, since we do have someone here. Just give us your name and affiliation for the record, and then tell us your comments.
I'm Doris Riley. I belong to the Hampton Bay Civic Association, but I'm here on behalf of myself. And the last time that I came, I stated that I have nothing against CVS. In fact, I love CVS. I just don't want it in Hampton Bays. And when I was here last time, was it two or three weeks ago? I can't remember. What was suggested to me was that I go back to the town board. And I went to the town board two nights ago. But I'm not really sure if there's anything at this point that I can do, but I am going to try my darndest. And if I can just read something. One of the great things about Hampton Bays, besides beautiful beaches and good ground park, is that we have a movie theater. The ones in Southampton and somewhere else have been closed for a while. Even Riverhead does not have a movie theater. If the town of Southampton is trying to bring more people to shop, visit, eat in Hampton Bays, they really need to keep the Regal Movie Theater here. We don't need a CVS. We need a place that brings enjoyment to families, teenagers, and adults. I'm tired of hearing people talk about upgrading Hampton Bays and getting more people here to enjoy the town, and at the same time, planning to destroy the movie theater and replace it with a drugstore. On so many levels, this is not right. We already have a comfortable theater that shows many movies, not only in English, but in Spanish. Okay, no reclining seats, but otherwise, it's comfortable, clean, and in a great location. Luckily for Hampton Bays, the theater doesn't open until late afternoon most days. This would not be the case with CVS. The increased traffic at an already busy intersection will be hard to deal with, even potentially dangerous. Many years ago, there was talk about a theater district in Hampton Bays. We need to keep our movie theater, and it's already here. You know, they have, and then I talked about what different things the movie theater has. Two of the things that they talk about at the town meeting, I mean, there was the overlay district, there are all these things, is like making Hampton Bays more attractive. I love it here. I think it's attractive enough. And not to have, you know, to have place, something that would bring people in. We have a movie theater. If that movie theater is taken apart and made into a drugstore, we'll never be able to afford to build another movie theater. But hopefully, CVS could find another place. I know there's not that many around, but I'm just, you know, that's all I have to say. I want the movie theater here. If it closes and I want to see an opera in high def, I don't want to go to East Hampton. I want to go to my town, my town. And I don't know what else is possible, and I've been away for a couple of weeks, months, whatever. I'm back, and I'm going to do whatever I can, and I probably can't do anything, but I will try my darndest because we need the movie theater. You have to understand that. You have teenagers, you have Spanish-speaking people, you have older people like myself. I can't drive at night to East Hampton. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it. Anyone else speaking to CVS? Then I'll adjourn this, right, Christine? Okay, we'll adjourn the hearing.
Thirty days?
For...
Did you have a requested date, or?
No.
How about thirty day? The next public hearing is...
I would do the second one in August.
We have a lot on the 24th.
August 24th?
Do we have a lot on? Yeah.
For on?
I think it's have to go to September.
September.
How many do we run, the 24th?
Fourth, four.
September 14th.
September 14th. Okay, so make a motion to schedule this for a public hearing, September 14th.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis. Second by Gloria. All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Six in favor, one absent. Thank you for coming. Okay, we're moving on to 2822 South Beach Road Public Hearing, and we have sufficient notice, council?
Yes, we do.
Very good. Please take notice that in accordance with local law 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, July 13, 2023, at 6:00 PM, Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton via teleconferencing to consider the lot line modification application entitled 28 and 32 Beach Road. The pre-application consists of a lot line modification which proposes to transfer 16,189 square feet foot from parcel one to parcel two on a 181,880 square foot total project area situated in the R60 zoning district, the WQI high priority area, a New York State archaeologically sensitive area, and the Cultural Resources Protection Overlay District located at 28 and 32 South Beach Road, Chinook Hills, Tax Map Number 90233-1-16 dot 4, 16 dot 10.
Good evening again. Philip Butler with Farrell Fritz on behalf of the applicants. So, the subject properties are two improved lots. They were subdivided in 1991 as a two-lot subdivision. As you can see from this map, originally, the subdivision was the two lots with the landlocked lot, which is the one that's currently highlighted, having a beneficial driveway easement crossing the lot that has street frontage on South Beach Road. Fast forward 30 years, and I think both property owners have come to the realization that there is no benefit for the encumbered property to basically bear liability and ownership of an easement area that it has no beneficial use of. They don't have access to it because of vegetation. They don't use the driveway because the home on 28 actually has a separate driveway onto South Beach Road, which that provides direct access to that home. So, really, this is just doing what I think is most logical and swapping ownership over the driveway. I know that this would create a flag lot, which technically, from a planning perspective, is not always the most preferred, but for all intents and purposes, it's already a flag lot. So, really, we're just transferring ownership to the house that the driveway belongs to. Notably, the lot that has the frontage, that's 28 South Beach Road, will still be a compliant lot, so it won't become substandard as a result of the transfer.
Any questions from the board? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this application? Okay, hearing done. We'll close with a 10-day written comment period.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Six in favor, one absent, 10-day written comment.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, bye-bye. So, the public hearing for Delandro Farms, we have noticed?
We do, ma'am, sure.
Okay. And Tom is reading it into the record.
Please take notice that in accordance with local law number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, July 13, 2023, at 6:00 PM at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-application entitled Delandro Farms. The application proposes the merger, the merging of two single and separate lots and the subsequent subdivision of a 261,783 foot square foot improved property into three lots situated in the R20 zoning district, Central Pine Garlands compatible growth area, and Aquifer Protection Area located at 2901, 2883 Quag Riverhead Road, Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-313-1-6.
Tom, the, on the agenda, it's a CR8 zoning district.
It's okay, I could have been...
CR8, that's not dispositive.
It says R20 on the notice item.
Wayne?
Good evening, board members. Wayne Bruin on behalf of the Delandro family and Delandro Farms. As indicated in notice, we're here for a pre-application conference for a proposed subdivision into three lots. The property is located on the westerly side of Quag Riverhead Road, County Road 104. As you can see on the aerial photograph, probably 95% of the property is previously cleared and farmed. The property's actually two tax parcels, a very narrow parcel, approximately one acre on the north, and in the balance, a five-acre parcel on the south. The parcel on the south, you can see the existing driveway to the property is on the narrow parcel within the first 50 feet from the north line. And then that serves the, there's three dwellings on the southerly parcel, as well as several outbuildings and former greenhouse. This was a farm operation where there was actually a flower, florist enterprise where they did a lot of things out of the greenhouse. That has long disappeared. Our clients purchased a few years back. One of the things you don't see on this aerial photograph, but there was a substantial, a couple of locations on the property, were substantially impacted by groves of invasive bamboo, which my client removed. If you go back a couple aerial photographs, you'll see, probably the one before that, I don't know which one you were on, but all that is bamboo at some point. So, that was all removed as an invasive. The proposed subdivision is into three lots, and two of them are flag lots. The front lot, they're all exceeding the 80,000 square foot with the flags, and all exceed the 80,000 square foot requirements. So, the proposed subdivision would have two flag lots and a common driveway on the north where that existing driveway is. The plan is to maintain the existing vegetation that is along the edge. If you look to the north and west, there is the subdivision of Wildlife Associates. That was a cluster subdivision. They're all one-acre lots or smaller. They also have a requirement to maintain a 50-foot natural buffer on the rear of their lots. So, the plan in this proposal would be to leave, as you can see, the vegetation that runs along the northerly property line and the vegetation along the westerly portion of the property. So, three lots, there is public water, will be served, all the existing structures and dwellings will be removed at some point. So, if you have any questions, we did hear from a couple neighbors, tried to explain the proposal, and they said they may attend either in person or by Zoom, so.
And did you have this, the subdivision?
Yes. We're going to put it on the screen.
We want it on the screen. Okay, and who would like to speak to this? Come, please, to the podium. Yeah, come.
Just use the podium.
Just go to the podium, give us your name.
Hi, my name is Ellen Bach, and I live at 11 Blue Jay Way, which is one of the properties which abuts the Delandro property. I have lived there for 20 years, and the house is in an extremely wooded development, and what attracted us to the property in the first place was that it is totally separated from the houses on either side of us by thick, tall foliage. You do not see another house from my house when you're sitting there. And this property, the Delandro property, it was, as was just discussed, a farm. It was, you know, stripped down. There is basically, you know, nothing there. And my concerns are twofold. One has to do with the way, I believe it's, I believe it's House Number One, which would be sort of the one that's closest to my property, and that driveway would sort of end like right next to my property, where there would be cars coming in and out. But more importantly, I did already refer to the wooded nature of the whole area, and I am concerned about that, and I would like to see, I know that it was just said that, you know, the buffers that already exist are going to be left there, but I would, I would like to see like a 50-foot natural vegetated buffer, an additional one alongside the edge of the property, because I just feel that this whole thing is going to be, you know, too close to us, and that is going to...
Which is your property?
Sure.
Her property is right here.
The very first one?
Back here, I guess.
Yeah, okay. And there's a lot of vegetation in front of you now.
Well, she has...
There is a buffer there now, yeah. There is a buffer that is there, that has always been there.
You have to speak into that mic for recording.
Yeah, no, there is a buffer that is there and that has always been there, but the, and there are some trees there, but the trees that are there, you know, in the winter, these trees don't have any leaves on them. And even in the summer, you know, if there were a house, you know, houses right there, you know, that close, I feel as if it would be, you know, a complete change to the neighborhood. And so, that's my, those are my points.
Your concerns, okay. Great, thank you. Someone else wish to speak? Wayne, do you have anything to, any, anyone on Zoom?
We have a person on Zoom.
Excuse me?
There's one person on Zoom.
One person, okay.
Anthony, where's the building envelope on that third lot?
The one back here, or?
Yeah, that one, yes.
So, this in the middle here.
Okay.
So, the property line comes up here, but this is where the building envelope comes, the front yard.
So, that driveway is just going to dip into...
We have the speakers on Zoom.
Okay, welcome. You're on Zoom. Please give us your names.
Hi. Hi, Mark Tannenbaum and Randy Warren. We live at 15 Blue Jay Way, so our property directly abuts the property that we're talking about. So, our concern is really the same as the person who just spoke, and we are very close to the property that you guys are talking about developing. There's a wooded buffer there that according to what I see in the pictures, half of that wooded area is going to be removed, and there's going to be a lot of open area behind it. And we are in the same situation. We have a property that has been secluded, very tree, very beautiful because it's grown in and forested, and those trees are going to be taken down, and we're going to be very exposed to the property behind us. And it's been this way since these homes were built, and only gotten more beautiful and more grown in over the 30 or so years that these properties have existed, so we would very much like this not to happen.
We can double-check, but it looks, it looks as if the, that buffer in the back, that tree line will remain. Is that correct, Wayne?
Right.
Yeah. That can, I don't know if you can see that from where you are? Do you see those trees?
But it looked like that blue line was going to come back.
That face, they face your property, right?
Yes.
Right. Well, they're going to remain. They will not be removed.
So, so all the trees to the right of that red line?
Will remain.
So, no trees will be taken down?
Not in that patch, according to...
Is that correct, Wayne?
Wayne said.
Well, we'll look at it, something that's easy to enforce.
What about to the left of the red line?
Probably isn't 50 foot.
Well, the left of, the left of, the left of the red line is your property.
Oh, so they can't touch, so, and to the right of the red line is going to remain as well?
We want to keep as many of the trees as we can.
Yeah.
And we're going to do that.
No, no, not as many of the trees as we can, all the trees.
Yeah, it seems like if we, like if that's the, is the 50-foot thing that's required, is that all of those trees between the, between what's, between the blue and the red and to the right of the red? Or is it, or is that 100 feet?
Wayne, do you want to speak to that?
If I may, and Anthony, you can explain what the town G I S has shown, but I believe that red is the property line.
That's the property line.
The blue is showing where there are existing conservation easements.
We can't hear you.
So, on the back of each of the properties in Wildlife Associates is a 50-foot conservation easement that they cannot touch, their back 50 feet. So, what we're proposing is something similar to that. We'll delineate the edge of the vegetation.
We can't see what you're...
Provide a buffer along that side as well.
Can they see that map? No.
No, we can't see any of it.
I'm not on Zoom, so I can't share.
Can you re-show what you just did?
Anyway, we heard their comment is to try to preserve as much of the trees.
Yeah, you're going to preserve a buffer on your side, just like they have on their side.
We can, because there's existing natural vegetation there that will try to do the same, same as they did.
So, with the conservation, conservation buffer, plus what you're going to put on your side buffer?
They may have, end up with a 100-foot buffer.
Yeah. So, you have a 50-foot conservation buffer on your side? Hello? And then, okay.
We can't see anything that you've just showed.
So, we have a 50-foot on our side, do they have a 50-foot on their side that makes 100 feet?
They may well, yes, that's just what the applicant's attorney said.
But the goal is not the same thing. If you're required to have 50 feet, we have our 50 feet. Your goal should not be 50 feet. You must have 50 feet if that's the required buffer. You can't rely on our 50 feet.
There's no required buffer. Let me correct you with something. There's no required buffer. We can put a zero buffer on that line, but based on your comments and based on what we see on that map, I think your requests are reasonable. I think the board agrees with us, and the goal is to mimic the buffer that you have in you. But understand, there's no requirement for any buffer right now. And in fact, they could go in tomorrow, well, they can't go in tomorrow, but they could, before this application came forward, they could have gone on there with the bulldozer, cleared all those trees, and then dropped their application at town. So, I think they're, I think we've got a cooperative applicant here, which we don't always have.
I'm not saying not, but we just don't understand. We're just asking you so we have a theory.
Well, maybe, maybe if you get a chance, you can come to the planning department and take a look at the map, and I think you'll understand it better.
I'll copy the map and send it. Well, that's why we showed up here at the meeting.
Yeah.
Because this is the only notice that we had that this is going on.
Yeah.
You have the maps there, we can't see them, so I think it would be much better if we could, so that we can understand.
The other thing is that, you know, we just don't know. So, we're just asking you for explanation. Nobody's trying to have fight with you.
No, no.
Just trying to get an explanation.
In fact, your comments, your comments are important. That's, that's, I think you're accomplishing what you set out to do, because we're hearing your concerns, and they're reasonable requests. You know, what you're asking for is not unreasonable.
So, you, you know...
So, how do we move forward?
This is a pre-application hearing, so it's just the very, very beginning of the process.
So, what happens from here going forward then?
I want me to just to, so I'm Anthony Trez, I'm the planner. After the close of the public hearing, staff is going to prepare a report that makes, for the board to review and ultimately adopt, that will make recommendations on how to proceed and what changes to the subdivision. So, for example, if at the time we adopt the pre-app report, the planning board wants a 50-foot buffer on that property, that report's going to say that the final map has to have a 50-foot buffer on it. So, what we're going to do is then ultimately prepare a report that makes recommendations based on public comments, based on our referral comments to the various agencies, and then staff will make recommendations to the planning board. And then ultimately, another separate final application has to come in.
So, that's, that's the process?
What did you say? I didn't hear you.
That is the process?
Okay.
All right, so then, where do we have the ability to be involved the next time?
Your, the public hearing is your ability to involvement in the process.
The next time.
The next time, when we get to the final application, the planning board could hold a final public hearing on the final application. But in the meantime, you should also put your requirements or your recommendations in writing, submit into the planning department, so they're also on the record in writing. And then when we do the report, you'll have access to that report. You can always spoil it, and we'll give you a copy of the report. So, that'll show you the direction the planning board goes in.
The planning board is the Southampton Town Planning Board.
Correct.
Could they put your email in the chat, just so if they want to get a copy of the map electronically? Anthony?
Kevin has to do that. I don't know if he can do that from there.
Kevin, maybe you could do that, or put a link to the website or something.
Do that.
Okay. Got it.
Okay, we appreciate your comments, and they'll be incorporated into the report, but put your concerns in writing to the planning board, Town of Southampton.
Email is fine also.
Yeah.
Yes, email it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Erin, thank you.
Thanks, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne, any final comments? Sure, come on up. You have to go to the podium because of the recording equipment. Thank you.
I mean, just a small one. I just wanted to mention that the, the trees which currently exist, and actually, I believe they're on my property, which are, you know, sort of along this property line, are old, and they're very tall, and you can actually see right through them, you know, in other words. So, it's not really providing any, you know, visual buffer. So, you know, I don't know how, you know, I don't know what the best way to handle that is, but you know, if, 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 when a buffer on the other side is contemplated, you know, it would be great if we could figure out some way to...
Lower.
To make it a little bit, you know, more private, you know. And I would also ask, and I don't know if this is possible, but if there is another planning meeting on this, whether it's, you know, six months from now or whenever it is, if it's at all possible to give more notice, I mean, I literally got this letter, you know, the day before yesterday, so it would be nice to know that it was coming up.
Right.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Wayne, any closing words?
No. I think what I've heard is something that we can explore. Obviously, I would maybe encourage, maybe the staff will go out there and look at the vegetation to see where it is, and actually have our surveyor note exactly where it is. I do want to point out, despite your statute not requiring a copy of the application or the map be sent on a pre-application conference, we do that as a matter of course, and every one of our neighbors got that in the notice, so they have a copy of the map, albeit it may be a reduced copy.
Yeah, hard to see sometimes.
That being said, we will, I think the buffering is reasonable, but I want to point out that our lots are twice the size of all their lots, and our neighbors should make sure that they look at their requirements, make sure their buffers are intact and their clearing is intact. As you know, you have clearing requirements on those lots as well.
Right.
So that's all we have.
Great, thank you. Any more questions on the board?
Close.
Close will be ten-day written comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by Craig, all in favor. Opposed, abstentions. Six in favor, one absent. Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Dennis, second by Gloria. All in favor?